We're with us here tonight. Good to see you here in the boardroom and also those who are watching us on our live stream. Welcome to you as well. This morning, we opened with a prayer and a pledge, and we will not repeat that this evening. Did want to call attention to our six board priorities, which are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. With that, we will move on to the first item, which is approval of the agenda. And is there any need to make any adjustments to that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda's approved. So the first up is we have 2025 Ms. Cleveland and Ms. Cleveland-teen here with us, Hannah Stevens and is it Emma Catherine? Both names or just one?
It's a full name.
Okay, Catherine Warren. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening. Emma Catherine Warren, you're Ms. Cleveland's teen. I'm currently a senior at John T. Hoggard High School and duly enrolled at Cape Fear Community College. I plan to attend East Carolina University in the fall for a degree in vocal performance. Currently, I'm employed at Canterbury Stables as an assistant instructor for the horseback riding program and a care giver to the animals of the property. Being a local title holder also means to stay active in your community and across North Carolina. With this, I'm honored to be a volunteer and advocate for the Grandparents Support Network. The Grandparents Support Network, founded by the YWCA, is a support group for the grandparents provided full-time care for their grandchildren. The Grandparents Support Network recognizes the unique challenges faced by becoming primary caretakers of their grandchildren so that both parties can feel seen regardless of circumstance. As of right now, the Grandparents Support Network has one branch in Wilmington, North Carolina, so we are currently trying to build our platform to other counties and communities so that families can have the assistance they need and for the people who may not know about this cause. Weekly meetings at Wilmington's branch of the Grandparents Support Network has been a wonderful way for me to learn more about how I can help the families battling these obstacles. Whether it is a child dealing with trauma, neglect, or abuse, or grandparents struggling to afford another addition to their household. My job as a volunteer is to aid the families in need and to share the word of this very important organization. I'm working to grow the Grandparents Support Network to this area and beyond to utilize the Miss America opportunity as another form of this platform. I am so fortunate to represent the Cleveland area aheading to High Point, and I cannot wait for what is to come. Again, it has been a pleasure to see you all today, and I'm Emma Catherine Warren, you're Ms. Cleveland's teen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for coming up to see us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Sky Stevens, and I'm your current reigning Ms. Cleveland. Now, I'm actually a hometown girl. I was actually born not too far from here at the used-to-be Johnson Memorial Hospital, now UMC Health, and I grew up in the McGee's Crossroads area. So Cleveland is basically my home, and I'm really excited to wear it across my chest this year in High Point in June, and hopefully one of the Cleveland girls will bring home the title of North Carolina. Who knows? So a little bit about myself, as I said, I grew up around here. Now, every single delegate in the Miss North Carolina organization across Miss America also has to do a community service project or the community service initiative. And mine, Sky is the Limit for the Arts. So Sky is the Limit for the Arts is a nonprofit organization that I created where I'm promoting and providing opportunities across the state of North Carolina and beyond to get community members engaged in their local arts. Now, ways I'm doing that, I have a monthly newsletter as well as a children's book funding for the local arts in our area. Again, thank you so much for your time. I'm Hannah Sky Stevens, you're Ms. Cleveland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Do we have multiple people representing Johnston County? Is Johnston County, Ms. Johnston, any different from Ms. Cleveland?
So it's all part of the same organization. So we compete, so we were all part of the Ms. Johnson County Organization. So there's Ms. Johnson County, Ms. Johnson County's teen, Ms. Cleveland, Ms. Cleveland's teen, and then Ms. Smithfield, Ms. Smithfield's teen. So we have six girls representing Johnston County this year.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. And we do need to get a picture.
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. So nice to meet y'all.
Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate it.
I think they get prettier every night, don't they?
What's it now, too?
All right. Next up is public comments. This is a time for anyone here to address the board on an item that is not already on the agenda, which ought to be pretty easy tonight, seeing that we have one item on there. And we asked that when you come up, if you would, state your name and your town or township that you reside in. And also remember, you have three minutes to present to us, so if you'll do that. And a final reminder to keep your comments in a civil nature. And also, this is not a time for the board to respond and engage in discussion. It is time for us to listen. So with that, I'll have the first speaker.
Hi, I'm Kevin Saunders, and I'm setting up an organization called The Watchdolls of Johnston County to address issues in Johnston County where you might feel that the county government has came up short on you and with the county commissioners being voted officials, you know, let them know that your vote counts and you're a taxpaying citizen. And you can reach me at kgsaunders23@gmail.com, and I will soon have a website set up called The Watchdolls of Johnston County. So I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Saunders. All right. Anyone else?
Hey.
It's been a minute since we've seen you.
I know. Hey, how y'all doing?
Good.
Thank you so much.
Best helper ever.
My son. Y'all might have saw him last time.
Videographer, yeah, yeah.
Um, hopefully he won't do that this time. But thank y'all for letting me come up here and speak. My name is Elizabeth Lynn. I'm a Clayton resident, born and raised in Johnston County, and I'm just here representing down home, a community-based organization. And we are back. We were here last month, but we wanted to announce that we are doing a public launch to a Fresh Foods Strong Families issue campaign. It's going to be, our members voted and decided that that was something that we wanted to advocate around this year. The campaign is dedicated to tackling food insecurities right here in Johnston County, especially for low-income families and seniors who face barriers accessing fresh food, affordable food. I volunteered at the Smithfield Food Bank throughout last year, and like every month, the building would be wrapped around, the parking lot full. Like, people are wanting and needing access to, you know, alternatives than going and having to pay in the grocery stores. And our Turn Up the Value Double Bucks kickoff, that's the name, and I have flyers, is happening this Saturday, April 12, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. We will be at the Clayton Main Street Community Garden hosting a family-friendly event, and it's absolutely free. We invite everyone to come out and learn more about us and the campaign. We'll be serving fresh fruit and hosting fun, unique Easter egg hunt. It'll be a spin on the Easter egg hunt, but it's fun with special prizes, plus there'll be fruit demonstrations and valuable information about the benefits of farmers' markets using this Double Bucks program and the community garden and utilizing community garden spaces. It'll be a day filled with fun, learning, and fresh food. And you may ask why Double Bucks program is important and why we're advocating around that, but food insecurity is a growing issue in Johnston County, and it contributes to the poor health outcomes, particularly for our low-income families. And we believe that everyone deserves access to the healthy, fresh produce. And our campaign's main goal is to raise awareness, and we're calling the county commissioners to help secure some funding in the budget to help local farmers' markets accept programs like Double Bucks, making fresh produce more accessible for these needs. We are open to sharing more data, information to the county commissioners in hopes of talking more about what the information we found and some programs that we believe will benefit the agriculture, the families in our community. So thank y'all so much.
Because it has to be fun for the kids and the Easter.
Yes, and we, and that is why we have, yeah. Yes, we made sure there was something fun at the event, so we definitely want families to come out and learn more about this. Thank you so much.
And you said, what the time?
It's 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. this Saturday, and it will be at the Clayton Community Garden in downtown.
So that's, and I'm just saying, that's 4:39 East Main Street?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I like the play on Turn Up the Value. That was cute.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We will move on and bad clerk, no emails since this morning. Okay. All right. We will now move on to the rezoning conditional use. And I guess this is a rezoning request. It is. Let me flip the page here. Let me, so if you were here for case 2502, which was on Cleveland Road, that case has been withdrawn. So if you're here for that, I'm sorry, but that case has been withdrawn. So there's nothing to be heard on that tonight. All right. Sorry, I didn't announce that before the meeting yet. So we will then move on to case 2503, which is a rezoning hearing. And I will call on our planning director, Branson Newton, to present the background on this.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Your first case, only case this evening, is 25-03. This involves a petition to rezone 96, approximately 96 hundredths of an acre located at 10-790 NC Highway 210, an elevation township, and community business to industrial one, which is light industrial zoning classification. Owner and applicant, Adam Glenn, and Mary John Barefoot, applicant is North Carolina Glazing and Fabrication. The existing or surrounding land uses and zoning are agricultural residential use for such purposes, and you'll see that on the rear of the properties and to either side, north, the east, and west as well. And the property to the east of this 96 hundredths of an acre is I-1, and this is part of the glazing and fabrication business. And the subject parcel is, once again, community business, and it is used currently for a business also associated with the glazing business. Traffic concerns, this portion of 210 is, shows about 10,000 vehicles per day, and this is a 2023 count, and it does appear on our CGP as a boulevard needing improvement. With regard to our land use plan, this is a low-density, identified as a low-density residential place type, and envision Johnston's, envision Johnston comprehensive land use plan. Glad to answer any questions you may have about this particular subject parcel or their request. One other point of note, immediately across from this, you will see a parcel there that is also zoned, community business, and this houses a car sales with associated mechanics garage in support of that car sales as incidental use. Once again, glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? So I did have some, somebody else did. So the uses in I-1, what are some typical, I don't know if you know the number of them off the top of your head, but what are some typical uses in I-1?
So if you think about I-1, it's light manufacturing or light industrial. So you could look, you could look at warehousing to, and obviously, this, the space here is limited in terms of acreage, but it could be used for warehousing, logistics, outdoor storage, associated, even building material supplies and such. Any sort of certain types of manufacturing where you're talking about less obtrusive types of manufacturing, meaning low noise, no, hopefully no byproduct odor, or any type of smokes, or no smoke stacks or anything of that nature. Those are the type of uses we're talking about. And once again, if it, as a, this is a general use district rezoning. Under a general use district rezoning, anything that may be allowed by right under that zoning classification, as noted in our ordinance, would be permissible once a site plan approval has, or a site plan has been reviewed and approved. All right. Any other questions?
I've got a question, Mr. Newton. The lot beside it where the business is actually settled on, now, what is that zoned?
It's currently I-1. So the lone building there to the right, to the east, if you want to call it to the east of the property, yes, is I-1.
And we're looking to do the same for that other lot?
The same for the other one, yes, 96 hundredths.
And when was the I-1 designation applied to the other?
That predates me, but it's been, it's been well over a decade.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton? All right. Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Yes, sir.
And at this time, we will hear from the applicant to present any information relevant to helping us make this decision.
Good evening, Board. My name's Brian Leonard. I'm with BRL Engineering and Surveying. It's good to be here. It's been a while since I've been in front of them. I'm not sure I had these last time.
Didn't have this either.
I see some of y'all.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's right. So, yeah, I think the history was presented well. What we have is a .95 acre parcel that we're requesting to be rezoned from CB to I-1. It's right next to a two-and-a-half acre parcel, already zoned I-1, and also owned by the applicant. The applicant currently operates a thriving commercial glass business on both these parcels. The product manufacturing building exists on the current two-and-a-half acre I-1 parcel, while the office, traffic circulation, storage area exists on both the parcels, including the subject CB parcel. So since the applicant has operated his business on both parcels, since he owned it, and that the subject property being requested for rezoning is already zoned, it's already zoned for business use, we feel that this is a little bit of a unique request and that it is logical to have a straight rezoning for this site, and simply to make both parcels zoned I-1 where the business currently operates. Now, I'll also say, and should say, that the applicant wants to be very transparent with the board and wants you to know that because his business is doing well, he does have a plan to expand his operation there. So we want you to know that right off the bat. This plan is to provide a new office space, not production space. There's an existing building on the CB parcel that operates as his office, and it serves the greater production facility on the I-1 parcel. So this plan would provide a new office space and an indoor storage warehouse, okay, on the subject parcel being requested here. It's not a plan to expand production. If anything, it would help clean up the site a little bit because he does have outdoor storage, so this would allow him to move his outdoor storage space to an indoor facility. It would help with onsite delivery, circulation, traffic, and parking. And once we submit the plan, it would even add some landscape buffering as required by current standards. And one, one other interesting site aspect to this, I'm glad this image is up on the display. It's worth also noting that he could expand the facility that he wants to provide, this storage space. He could do it to the east side. You see the clump of trees and heavily, oh, nice. See the clump of trees right there? It's heavily wooded. That's part of the I-1 zoning, and he could expand to that side. But it would remove those trees, and it expands closer into the residential surrounding area. So we feel that this request is appropriate because his existing business operates all in this area. And again, we feel it's just a very logical request. It's not, it's not an AR to an I-1 request. It's a business, zone business currently to a higher intensity, but that higher intensity is already operating on this site. So again, we feel like that's the unique nature of this site, and that's, that's the presentation that we're trying, trying to make with this request. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We have the owner slash applicant here. If you have any questions about his operations, his business, he'd be happy to answer them. I think they had some questions at the planning board, so he's here to answer those.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with the business, good business. Does he plan to raise the brick house now and replace it, or is it going to be incorporated into this expansion?
No, that will be gone.
Okay.
That's correct.
What are the dates of operation for the business and the times?
I'm going to let him answer that question.
Could you repeat the question? What is the, like, the business hours? Like, what are the times of production and the hours for, like, traffic coming in, going, and employees coming and going?
And if you would, state your name and address, please.
Adam Barefoot, owner, NC Glazing. It's construction. So we prefabricate in the shop. Construction is cyclical and seasonal, eight to five most times. Sometimes it's six to six, six days a week, and, you know, as, as work dictates. But we've been there for 13 years. I purchased a business that was there for 10 years prior, and we've outgrown our office, and it's time to get organized and clean up a little bit and spruce the place up. So that's what we're trying to accomplish.
I have a question. This rezoning won't really impact your ongoing, what has been, will continue to be, is that right?
That's correct. So the biggest thing that I, we found was, we used a yard for storage, which is, on days like today, is not very fun.
Right.
And we wanted to add on storage and incorporate office into it, and found that the business zoning was, you couldn't have a storage facility.
Right.
So that, that's why we're here now.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Barefoot?
Thank you.
And also, as part of the plan that he has, the current property line would have to be removed between the buildings, so it would ultimately be one parcel of land.
One parcel.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? All right. I will close the public discussion portion of the hearing and call on Mr. Newton to summarize and present the planning board's recommendation.
Sir, as it relates to case 25-03, the planning board does recommend approval and offers for your consideration a statement of consistency as in your packet.
Preston, question. With, with this and the zoning change, would there also be a submittal that would have to be approved of the building that was going to be built there, I'm assuming?
There will be required a site plan, yes.
Okay. But, so we don't know yet what the size of the building or how many stories or anything like that is yet?
We don't have an official submittal, I mean.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So whenever we rezon anything, we try to think past the current owner for what it's going to be, you know, not just today, but in the future. And so my question is, would, we use conditional zoning a lot for a lot of cases just like this. What would be the disadvantage of, and, you know, why wouldn't we have gone that route, being so, so close to residences on, on two sides?
So you're, the, hate to call it a disadvantage, but one thing you want to look at here is with a general use district rezoning, whatever is permitted by right in ordinance and now, or potentially in the future with any changes to the ordinance, any permitted land uses, those are permitted by right. They only have to bring forward a, a development plan, so that site plan that has to be approved, assuming there are any improvements to be done to the property. If there are no improvements to be done to the property, and it's simply just verifying that the use is appropriate for that district in terms of, they would submit through building inspections, they would submit a, a change of tenant or potentially change of occupants, occupancy permit application. We would look at that to verify that use and determine that use is appropriate for the district. So once again, it does, it would open you up to a greater number of uses and some of being of greater intensity as well.
Mm-hmm.
And some with less intensity.
I like to make a statement regarding that. Commissioner Rose makes a good point, and I think we probably ought to always keep that in mind when we're looking at this type of thing. But to me, there's nothing new being introduced in the community. It's already there, and it's permitted. And all I can see is really allowing the applicant to better, achieve better efficiencies in his operation, and actually probably more aesthetically pleasing appearance to the, to the whole operation. Because right now, you've got a commercial building out there, and you've got this house that's been converted into an office, and, you know, I just think it would be better to put it all together. That's just my thoughts.
Any other questions?
Yes. Branson, what does the land use plan say about the particular situation here?
So it does, our land use plan does identify as in a low-density residential place type area, and, and that would be. So what you're looking at, low density, once again, that's, that's subjective, but it is low-density residential, does allow for certain types and certain areas within that, especially rural areas, like at rural crossroads, does allow for certain community or commercial type uses or non-residential uses to help serve that community. But once again, this is not in one of those crossroads.
All right. Any other questions?
Could outdoor storage be added to the conditional zoning if, if they did a rezoning? Because I know that was what was one of the concerns right now, was the outdoor storage that they had with the general business or commercial, community business. So would that be one of the conditions that could be added if they were to do a rezoning?
If, if it was conditional zoning, yes.
Any other questions? So I, so I had one, and it kind of follows along. Commissioner Rose, he was talking about down the road and change of ownership, but if it were zoned, rezoned I-1, and I know Mr. Leonard mentioned they didn't want to expand it to the trees, so if it's rezoned I-1, they could expand their operations onto what is now the separate parcel, as you said, to, to the west, the production area?
Yes.
Okay.
Contingent on our approved site plan, yes.
Okay. And I guess my, what was the staff's recommendation?
Staff recommendation is dial.
Okay.
Due to the inconsistency with our land use plan.
Me again. So if we do this, and at the end of the day, just, you know, piggybacking off of what Commissioner Rose said, if, if the usage were to change, I'm just looking at the permitted uses in I-1, and of course, there's this storage facility, and against any storage facilities on major highways. So is it a situation where we would then look at if, let's just say, I know this, this particular applicant doesn't want to, but let's just say they wanted to put storage facility on this, would they automatically be allowed to, or they have to come back for, like, a special, because it doesn't say special use, would they have to come back for any type of other zoning, or they could just start putting self-storage?
As long as it's listed as a permitted use in that table.
Anything in here goes.
So it would, they would only have to be approved, a site plan only would have to be approved.
And there would be no reason that we could, I'm kind of looking past you, the attorney, now. There'd be no reason that we could essentially turn down the site plan if it was a part of the approved usage, correct?
As long, yeah, as long as it meets all the standards that the county has established for that, for the development of the site for that purpose.
Okay. I just share the same concern that you have of not what, I, I just share the same concern that you have of not what, what y'all want it to be, but if at the end of the day, you were to sell it, what somebody else could turn it into that would not be as fitting in the space. Again, I drive by this property pretty much every day. It's in no way a nuisance, but I don't wanna give somebody else the opportunity for it to be.
All right. Any other questions or comments? So, I, I will throw the comment in before we close this piece. So, I, I think, at least so far, this board has been pretty consistent when it comes to granting, uh, just broad standard, uh, general rezonings. And I think we've been, uh, looking at, because of the wide variety of uses, looking at limited to something we, uh, have, have some control over and can expectation. And I, and I do have concerns that, you know, what we approve today in, in a general rezoning changes at some point, whether it's next year, fifteen years down the road, particularly in the, what an area that we've identified as low residential in our land use plan. So, I've just, uh-
I see a distinct difference though, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You let me finish.
I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, thank you. Uh, so, I, I would just say, I was just more of a reminder to the board that, that our, we have been generally consistent, uh, in the application of that. So, Mr. Gaw.
I, I don't see why there's an issue, actually, because it's there, it's been there for two decades, it's not been a problem and, and if we, if we deny it or, or do something that, that screws it up, it, we've still got the I-1 right there beside it. I mean, it's the same thing, same community, same everything, same highway. To me, it's a non-issue. I mean, I understand what you're talking about, consistency, and I would agree with that, but this has got unique circumstances, cause it's already there.
I know, but I think hindsight, I wish, we wish it wasn't there, if that makes sense. I mean, just, just food for thought. I, I'm just thinking of so many places, especially in my district, where if I could go back and whoever approved that being there, I would, you know, I, I think it's one of those things where this is where we can somewhat turn the tide without, I mean, Brasson, am I wrong? If they did conditional zoning, it would still accomplish what they're trying to accomplish, correct?
Uh, i- if approved, yes. Um, obviously, it would be conditions based on the development, we would be looking most likely for some, uh, limited use or uses of the property as part of those conditions.
But site plan requirements, uh, buffers, that would be the same?
All the same.
I mean, I'm really torn with this too, cause I understand, you know, forward-thinking, but at the same time, I understand and kind of agree with Commissioner Gaw, it's, it's already established and even here at this meeting and at the planning board meeting, no one from the community was in, against it. So, um, that right there shows that the community is supporting the business. So, um, I say, I see very, I very much see both sides of trying to make sure it's consistent with the future, but also understanding that it's already a well-established business that's already zoned the way it is and they're just trying to follow the rules of already making sure to do what they're wanting to do to expand by keeping the buffer part of the lot. Like I said, you wouldn't even realize that the other half of the lot was industrial because of the trees and then, then wanting to keep the trees right now is, I think, very nice.
Well, what I'm hearing is that, there's some, there's some on the board that, uh, while a straight rezoning has some negative connotations down the road, that, uh, not any reflection on this business, that a conditional zoning may be more appropriate to alleviate the concerns that, uh, the uses is gonna be reasonably consistent with our land use plan. It's not gonna be entirely consistent, but it's gonna be reasonably consistent and there will be some control over what type of function may ultimately go there if this business does cease to operate and the land is sold to somebody else. Now, that brings back the question, is the, uh, the process in which to develop this site to the current owner, is it any more arduous under a conditional use permit than it would be on a straight rezoning or is it basically the same amount of work and, and effort required?
There's probably a, uh, added layer to that with regard to a conceptual site plan for the conditional zoning, but eventually you still get to a more technically exhaustive site plan.
Which I also don't hate with it being in our, surrounded by residences.
Yeah, it's a residential neighborhood. It's a, um, I hear what everybody's saying and I, I think this is a tough one.
Yeah. And I, I just wanna say, uh, I, I'm not opposed to the proposed use. I, I just think the, the way we get there is different than, than a straight-up rezoning. And so, it, did you have one more thing and I'm, Mr. Leonard, uh, I was gonna open it back up so he could come, kinda do that?
Can I say one more thing?
Same way.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll let y'all, and then I'll bring Mr. Leonard back up.
Yeah, I was going to, uh, uh, agree with Commissioner Stovall in that, uh, I don't think that what is being proposed is, uh, being objected to at all. I think that, uh, the business expansion is a perfect idea. I think that we can accomplish both with the proper type zoning. I think that this, this maybe not be, uh, the long-range goal of, of how, how this board wants to zone, uh, property in low, in low-density areas. And so, I think that a conditional zoning could, could accomplish both things. It could, um, get these, uh, fine people the opportunity to expand their business, um, but also protect the surrounding inc-, uh, area for, for a long time after we're, we're off the board.
Did you have anything else? All right. Mr. Leonard?
Um, that's a good discussion. We've, we've had a similar discussion, um, as, as we anticipated that, you can look at it from, from both sides. Um, one thing I will say is that that piece right there is, is zoned I-1. It, regardless of whether we come back for a conditional zoning on that piece, that'll still be I-1. And it could be any, any one of those uses, uh, to Commissioner Gaw's point. Um, and I, I'm, I've never been a good poker player, cause I always show my cards. Um, but, um, and I, and I'm gonna do that right now. But part, part of our discussion on this is the owner thinks about those things too. He thinks about, you know, at some point, he may not be there. Not that his business is going under or he wants it to go under. And he, he would ideally like somebody else to come in and buy it for that same use, that same purpose. But it might be that a commercial glass company is not looking to buy that site. So, he thinks about his future value of this property and if he can sell it for additional uses, and quite frankly, we also had this discussion, the, um, the commercial glass business is a fairly intensive use, uh, as far as production goes in an I-1. So, it's very probable that any use that would go in would be less intense than, than the current use. So, those are some issues that I'll kinda bounce off with you guys, because we've looked at it, uh, from both angles and the owner obviously wants to protect his future value of the property. And if it's just limited to one specific use, um, that does devalue his future value. So, that's part of the reason for the straight rezon. I think it's an also, also a good discussion about similar issues. There are certainly circumstances that warrant a discussion like this, uh, versus a brand-new site that's in the middle of residential and you're asking for a straight rezon. So, just, uh, consider the unique, uh, the uniqueness of this site, um, as you make your decision and I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you.
I think what we're trying to achieve is some consistency in the process, but I would, I would, I would end by saying, we're from the government, we're here to help.
Well, we're here to represent all the citizens of this county and we're trying to be consistent with the land use plan that we've all agreed to, needs to be implemented to ensure quality of life in this county. And unfortunately, that's gonna lead to some decisions that are not very popular, uh, at times. Uh, I hate it, but it comes with the job.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Newton? All right. I will close the hearing and turn it over to the board for more deliberation and our motion.
Well, to get things started, I moved to approve the straight rezoning request, uh, to adopt a statement consisting of resolution as presented in the agenda packet and approve the rezoning request.
All right. We have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? And I'm gonna ask for a show of hands on this so we can-
I would, I would say additional discussion. Uh, I understand, Bill makes a good point and we ought to always keep that in mind, but we've got a unique set of circumstances here because this thing's been here a long time and it's not changed, it's not changed anything in the community. So, um, it seems to me as a, I know what we're trying to achieve, but it, it seems like we're injecting an, an element of bureaucracy that doesn't really help the people.
That was just gonna be my statement, is, is already, to make it one large tract, to me, it should just be consist, the use to be consistent, to make it one straight combined tract. Like I said, it's already an established business and there's been no complaints.
Well, I would also add that there is a path to get there through conditional, uh, special use. Uh, it's not like we're, as we stated earlier, we're not opposed to seeing this business plan, we'd love to see it expand, love to see it operate for decades, but, uh, you know, the interest that we're trying to, uh, protect here in terms of overall quality of life in this county, it was continued upon following that land use plan.
Anything else?
I have questions, but I'm so scared it's gonna take us down in the weeds, but in the event, you know, cause one of the things we're working on with our, our new land use plan is, is redefining a lot of the restrictions that go along with these, um, zoning, uh, types so that, that we can avoid situations like this. So, we don't have something that we're perfectly fine with, with an option with something that we don't feel like makes sense in an area. So, so with that being said, as a part of our process, is, is everything that we approve just going to be grandfathered in regardless? Or in the case of this coming back up for sale, you know, in the event you do wanna sell the property in three years or so, will we then have an opportunity to say, we no longer feel like this is an area that should be considered light industrial with our current comprehensive land use plan? That's a good question.
Yeah.
I don't think we can change it then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think, I'm not gonna solve that one tonight, or on this, on this case.
See, I said, I don't wanna take this in the weeds, I was honest.
And the two acres are still there in this same situation.
And I would just say, I think there are two criteria and I'll ask counsel to correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, uh, one, reasonableness. I haven't heard anybody say that we thought this was unreasonable request, but the second is consistency with our comp plan. And so, to me, that's where this falls short, it's, it's halfway there, there is a pathway to get, uh, to, in, into, hopefully, some compliance, do a conditional zoning. Uh, so, with that, any other discussion for, call for a show of hands? No. All right. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve, if you would?
I have another question. Can I make a-
I had finished, go ahead.
Well, I didn't know if this is a part where you say, can you make an amendment to the motion to amend it to say conditional, do a vote on conditional versus, I, I just don't wanna, so, if the vote is nay, does that turn it down?
Yes.
Completely.
They'd have to come back and do, re, do another application for a conditional zoning.
So, if the vote is nay, it would, there, there's no action, but the statute says that when, um, looking at a rezoning, you have to adopt a statement of consistency, whether you accept or reject. So, you would have to do the converse, um, and someone, i- if, if this is rejected, then someone would need to make a motion, um, to not, deny the rezoning request.
With those two features that you typically think of, one-
Having mic issues, I'm sorry. Um, one, the consistency with the comprehensive plan and, and two, uh, the, the reasonableness piece, those are the two standards. Um, in, in thinking about, you know, lots of times in ordinances, hours included, when there is an action, there is, is many times a waiting period before someone can come back to you.
I think-
In this particular, uh, situation, um, if the applicant were to come back with a conditional rezoning request, in my opinion, that would not require a waiting period because it's a different application and a different-
Type of use. And so, they, they could submit.
They could submit.
You can always come up here and-
I made, I made you-
We're running out of microphones on that side, yeah.
I, I didn't talk enough this morning, right?
It looks like, it looks like we're on. Um, but they could bring it back to the board with a conditional rezoning request without a waiting period. And I think Mr. Newton, shaking his head, he does agree, uh, with me on that particular piece of thing.
So, to answer, to answer your question, a nay does not allow it to move forward today.
But it's not gonna require twelve months for them before they can-
Yeah, there's, yeah, just come on up to the microphone. You gave it a, a good try, just come on up.
That's right. I've, I've tried two microphones now, so I'll come to the one that I know works. Uh, but that would not prohibit them from moving forward with an additional application if it were a conditional rezoning request. So, uh, there, there are options outside of this particular process, uh, tonight. Now, of course, if, if I'm the applicant, I would want you to know that that requires me to file a new application and that requires me to go to the planning board and that requires me to come back, uh, to this board. And, um, as was discussed, there is that, um, sort of additional, uh, requirement with regards to the site speci-, site-specific or concept plan that would be part of a conditional rezoning application, but, um, as Mr., as Mr. Newton said, you eventually get to that point anyway, because in order, uh, even if the rezoning were passed tonight, they still have to submit a site-specific development plan. So, that would come in the process regardless, it's just, do you do it upfront or do you do it later? And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have from a legal perspective.
Any other questions?
Legal question?
Yes, sir.
Terms of reasonableness and, uh, consistency, is that an either-or or is it, uh, estimate both criteria?
Um, it's an and. So, it should be consistent with the comprehensive plan and it can be, and, and there, comprehensive plans offer lots of flexibility, so, um, you've got to look at the whole plan.
Right.
Um, but it, it's an and, so it has to be, meet both pieces. So, consistency with the comprehensive plan and in the public interest, and public interest is the reasonableness standard.
Follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
We have a number of people that come before us looking for basically exemptions or things that deviate from in that plan and we have been fairly consistent in turning those down, uh, simply because, like I said, we've adopted a plan, we're trying to adhere to it with some level of consistency. If we approve something that does not consistent with the plan, are we setting a precedent, at least in the eyes of the public, that, uh, should guide our decisions going forward?
So, with legislative, uh, actions like what you have tonight, uh, they're very fact-based, depending on the circumstances that are before you on a particular issue. So, this does not bind a decision moving forward. Um, one of the things that I would want you to think about, however, is that when you think about, um, we just talked about the statute a minute ago that requires you to adopt a statement of consistency when you accept or reject a rezoning, you need to state why, um, that it is, it, it is reasonable in the public interest and consistent with the comprehensive plan as amended. So, you can amend your plan.
Yes.
Um, but you need to be able to state that reason as to why you were, as to why you were doing that as part of the resolution. And Brasson, if I missed anything, okay. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing done.
If, if we, if we turn it down, we haven't accomplished a thing, cause they can still go and develop that two acres within I-1. So, I don't see we, how we've protected the, the, the public at all if there's concerns about that. I understand the consistency. And again, with this unique set of circumstances, I'm not concerned about precedence. Each, each case has its own situation, but, and I think we ought to always default to that, what Mike and, and Bill Turner, uh, talked about a while ago, but again, we haven't accomplished anything, cause you can still do- But again, we haven't accomplished anything because they can still do all those what-ifs legally. All we've done is caused them a lot of headache and heartache.
Well, I understand that, but, and I knew the council's response, they were not setting a precedent, but I can tell you that in the eyes of the public, they see it as a precedent and they think that the similar type of application should be given the same consideration. And how do you pick and choose who can deviate from the plan, who can't? I think to me, it's a little more clear-cut from that standpoint.
Mr. Chairman, I think the key is that we've identified a pathway to where the applicant wants to go without compounding the further against the comprehensive land use plan that we have. I mean, you know, you've got a way to do it and then you're limiting that open-ended zoning, because the zoning stays with the property forever. So, you know, the more you open that door, the more it get, the more it, more else can come in, more can come in. So I think, I mean, if there wasn't a way to get through there, I think it'd be one thing, but we've identified a good way for them to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish, just a little bit different pathway than what we're faced with tonight.
All right, any other discussion? All right, I'm going to ask, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right, all those opposed to the motion, raise your hand. All right, motion fails. All right, that leaves us with a counter motion. Anyone want to make that motion? There's only one other option.
No taker.
If it doesn't look like it.
Is that?
The chair was, the chair was going to make it, but it was just unusual, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Yeah, based on the land use plan, even though this is a particular case that is very tricky, it has I-1 right beside it, I understand, but based on the land use plan, I do feel like that we do need to make a motion to deny this project at this time.
And for purposes of clarification, I suggest it's inconsistent.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. I'll read this exact one here, I'm sorry. I move to adopt a statement of consistency resolution that the use is not in the public interest and further that it is not consistent with the comprehensive land use plan.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. It's the same thing, all those in favor of the motion, please raise their hand and all those against, please raise your hand. The denial passes five to two. All right, we will move on to manager, report and comments. All right, board reports and comments, and Mike, Jim Harris, I'll start with you and we'll go circle the other way.
That's right, I don't have anything tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rose?
I'm good.
Commissioner Stevens?
I would just like to say, these meetings and decisions get harder and harder and I hope that everyone comes before us knows it's, it really doesn't have anything to do with necessarily the people or the business that they're running as much as we have spent a lot of time, effort and energy in creating what our path forward looks like. And sometimes that comes in the form of people that are in a current situation or a current place having to, for lack of a better word, help us adjust to these changes or understand the adjustment that we are trying to make, whether it makes perfect sense or not, I completely agree with so much of what was said tonight and it's, as I stated, not an easy decision, but at the end of the day, I think everybody in the county would agree that if we could go back and undo some of the zonings that are out there right now, we would. We see the upheaval that they cause all the time and if the smallest thing we can do at these meetings sometimes is just make a small change in what could be a bad decision five or 10, 15 years down the road, then sometimes we have to make those hard decisions. And, you know, we never want it to be to the detriment to someone of their, of someone or their business, but hopefully they understand that these decisions are not easy and they're not going to get easier until we fully get this plan completely outlined and figured out, which we're all working very hard to do.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
So I forgot to mention it earlier this morning, a church in my district is White Oak Hill Missionary Baptist Church and they're going to be having a community day this Saturday from 10 to 1. So anyone that is in the Middlesex area, part of the county line where it's like Johnson County, but then it's Nash County and it's that whole tricky section is in that area this weekend, they are going to be having, like I said, just a community day of awareness and different aspects and free event. And then I also wanted to comment for staff with Braxton for all their help moving forward. This past week was also the last public session of the comprehensive transportation plan and it was really great to see all the work that McAdams had brought to that, that was at the library last week. So thank you for staff and everything that took part for the last public hearing of the comprehensive transportation plan.
Commissioner Stovall?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Godwin?
Today, our newest board member graced us with some sampling of the Pace Family Farm strawberries and I just want to make the public aware that it's strawberry season, so go out and get some.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have anything to add, so a motion to adjourn.
So do.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. We are adjourned.
All right.